San Mateo County, and then finally in two thousand four over to the coast side as well in San Mateo County. And now the district encompasses seven hundred and sixty thousand constituents. It's broken up into seven wards or districts or sub-districts. And each one of those has an elected director. I'm the director for Ward One, which is the area around Monte Serrano, Los Gatos, Saratoga, and parts of Cupertino. We have twenty-seven preserves now spread out across that land. We just added Cloverdale Ranch last year. And trail systems have more than two hundred and fifty miles of trails. They're always free and open to the public. Parking is free. That's been a really strong ethic for MidPen over time to make it as accessible as possible to as wide a range of people as possible. And we opened up new office in Los Altos. Our board meetings are up there. We have other events up there, so you're always welcome to come up and see what's going on there, listen to what we're talking about. We have almost two hundred employees now, and this year will actually go over two hundred. A lot of that is in the field, probably two-thirds of it in the field, and then the rest in the office. We also have a very large volunteer program, and that's split across Trail Patrol and Dozen Naturalists, who lead hikes and bike rides sometimes and horse rides, and provide really great volunteering or naturalist interpretation. And then we also have a large volunteer program in basic weed management, primary land stewardship. And I'll talk a little bit later about the bond measure, but the general funding for MidPen comes through a slice of your property tax. That's how the most of it is funded. Next slide, please. So the next four slides here are going to talk about some of the preserves right in our area. The first one is Bear Creek Redwoods. If you go up Highway seventeen to the south and up to Bear Creek Road, turn up Bear Creek Road, about a mile up there is a parking lot. Across the street, you have a trail system, about six miles of trails that will take you pretty well up the hill. There's a stand of old growth redwood in there. It's really beautiful. And then on the other side of the road near the parking lot, there's the Alma College Restoration. So really interesting historic site. There's a picnic area back behind that. ADA path around a pond is really nice for bird watching as well. So lots of variety in that area. Next slide, please. So El Surano is one of my favorite open spaces. I love to go up there and see the different views. I think it's probably the hill that's on your wall here. And it's the one that's right up above us here. It has the main trail, a penis trail up sort of on the spine of the hill. And then lower down, it has another trail that I know Brian is very fond of, the overlook trail. That's even more accessible to people down the area here. Next slide, please. Sierra Azul is on the other side of Lexington Reservoir and goes all the way down to Mount Omenum, which is shown here, and then eventually down to the edge of Santa Cruz County. And over time, I'll talk about Measure AA, which is a set of projects that we're doing. One of those projects is actually to connect trails all the way down there to Soquel Demonstration State Forest, which would open up a pathway essentially from Los Gatos all the way down to Soquel. And this is our biggest preserve. It's nineteen thousand acres, many, many interesting things in there. The Mount Omenum area, if you can get up there, is very interesting. It has the restoration of the old radar station at the top, and lots of environmental restoration up there as well. It's been restored to much more natural state, and very, very nice work done there. There's also a tremendous trail, about three and three-quarter mile trail that goes all the way up the sort of the steep slope of that mountain, but it maintains a gentle grade, so it's really a nice experience. Next slide. And St. Joseph's Hill is right down tucked in next to Los Gatos, a relatively small area, but it has some very interesting trail connections and looping opportunities. This is also a place where our volunteers have done a lot of work in restoration and weed management. There was a lot of yellow star thistle and French broom up there. They've done a number of volunteer projects to manage that. And this is the first wildflower season starting now after a lot of that work was done. So if you go over on the side of it, the faces of the reservoir, you'll see they've opened up a lot more space for the native plants, and I'm hoping we'll have a really, really nice wildflower season there. Next slide, please. So I'll go on to some project updates. I think we have the counterpart to your quail here. Next slide. So I think everybody knows fire has become, you know, more and more on people's minds and on the minds of agencies and municipalities. And MidPen is certainly in the middle of that. This picture here is from the CZU fire. And our field people are not the first-line firefighters, but they do get involved. So this is a picture of a MidPen staff person helping to hold the fire line at Old Hall Road in La Honda during the CZU fire. And that fire in particular really changed MidPen's thinking towards wildlife fire resiliency and initiated a much bigger project, a much more intensive project, to do vegetation management and other aspects of it, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Next slide. So there are a number of different aspects to this program, but the one that you'll see the most of is the vegetation management plan. And, you know, this involves defensible space and creation of shaded fuel breaks, sometimes disc lines and other types of vegetation management. We're doing a lot of partnership in the Los Gatos Creek watershed along with Santa Clara County Parks and the Santa Clara County Fire Safety Council, as well as San Jose Water. So you'll see a lot of those projects, say, in the corridor, the Los Gatos Creek Trail, and then up in Bear Creek and Sanborn County Park up towards Summit. Many, many projects where you'll see these shaded fuel breaks being created in particular. Next slide, please. And this one is just showing some of the areas where this vegetation management has been done or is in progress. And you can see it's spread out across the district, including many places in our area here, Bear Creek, Sierra Azul, El Surano. And then one thing that's coming in the future you'll see more of is the prescribed fire plan. So this is in the planning stages now, but towards the end of the year, we hope to be starting the implementation of prescribed fire. And that's going to be done in close coordination with CAL FIRE, with local fire agencies, and with municipalities. And then also the public will have the opportunity to understand what's planned and to give their input as well, because a lot of times local knowledge, I think, is important to understanding maybe risky areas or particular concerns that need to be covered in these areas. Next slide, please. So we also have a number of very interesting and, I think, exciting and also complex and expensive projects coming up in the Highway seventeen area near Lexington Reservoir and the Linehan Dam. And there are two major parts to this. One is wildlife connectivity, so providing better pathways for wildlife to move through these areas, and particularly from the area deeper into the Santa Cruz Mountains, say, towards Saratoga, up the hills there, and then across Sierra Azul, and eventually towards the Coyote Valley and the eastern foothills. And this is particularly important for mountain lions, as there are relatively small number of mountain lions in the Santa Cruz Mountains. And if they get hoarded and they're not able to move around, or they get killed as they cross the roads, then the genetic diversity of that population will be reduced. And over time, that's a bad thing for that population. So we want to make sure that they are able to disperse and to move. And there's one project last, maybe two years ago, to open up a wildlife crossing at Laurel Curve that was run by the Santa Cruz, the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County. And we're doing one at essentially where the Linehan Dam is, just north of there, where Trout Creek comes down sort of out of El Surano. There'll be a very significant wildlife crossing there that's designed particularly for mountain lions, but will allow all sorts of wildlife to cross. And then the other major part of this project is really the public access part. And we have four major preserves in this area. We also have county parks across, you know, in the area around the reservoir. So we want to provide much better connections here. And one part of that will be a trail overcrossing for Highway seventeen. So we have two candidate locations for that. One is just north of where the wildlife crossing will be, and one is just south. In the next couple of months, we'll be deciding which one of those we're going to implement. And then the trail connections, there'll be a trail connection from there up to El Surano, which is, I think, very interesting, because it'll provide an all-off-road connection from the Los Gatos area up to there via the Creek Trail, and then connections to Bear Creek as well, and between St. Joseph's Hill and Sierra Azul. Next slide, please. Another really interesting project, I think, this is for very small animals. Several years ago, it was identified by citizen scientists that there was a very significant new mortality problem on Alma Bridge Road. And if you ever go out there, you may have seen this, newts tend to get squashed all over that road. They identified these three primary hotspots where there was a lot of mortality. And there was a further study where they tried to understand what would be the implications to the population of leaving this as it is. And what was found was that they expect over the course of fifty to sixty years, the local population of CAL FIRE, of newts, would be wiped out in that area. So the MidPen and the county have gotten together to plan a project where there'll be modifications to the roadway. The likely solution is to raise the roadway by probably a few feet and insert a lot of smaller culverts or crossings. So these would be crossings that won't be used by larger mammals, but they'll be used by all sorts of small creatures. And that should allow the newts to cross between the lower and higher areas during their breeding season and should sustain the population. So this is something, we were awarded a grant from Wildlife Conservation Board last year, and that allows us to proceed to the preliminary design phase of this one. Next slide, please. And then in two thousand and nineteen, some naturalists identified that there was a population of the Santa Cruz kangaroo rat in Sierra Azul. And this is significant, because previously there was only one known population, which was down in Felton, in Henry Cowell State Park. So they've now identified two places in Sierra Azul where there are local populations. And we're heading into a set of studies on their habitat and, you know, what the status of that habitat is and how to maintain it. The kangaroo rat is a really interesting and important species, because it's known as a keystone species, because it has a very large impact on the habitat that it occupies. And one example of that is that the, there are particular species of Manzanita that are sort of co-evolved with the kangaroo rat. And they're fire-adapted in the sense that their buries get buried by the kangaroo rats. And then in the event of a fire, the ash and the smoke causes berries to germinate and restore the plants. So if you take away the rats in these areas, scientists have shown that the Manzanita will also go away. And so it's a little guy, but it has a significant impact on its habitat. Next slide, please. So particularly in the areas close to the cities, we've started to have a big concern about poisons, rodenticides. And we're trying to do a lot of outreach to make sure that people around the preserves understand the potential impact of using poisons to control rodents. And what we've seen is that there are significant impacts on the animals if they're ingesting, say, poisoned rats or mice in these areas. And that problem is particularly heavy in the areas around places like Ranch of San Antonio, which have a lot of population around them, but also a lot of open space where these animals might be. So particularly coyotes, bobcats are susceptible to this. So we're trying to do a lot of outreach to make sure that people understand the implications and the alternatives. What alternatives can they use to control rodents in their, around their homes so that we're not having these impacts on the wildlife? Next slide, please. And the last thing I'll talk about here is Measure AA. So this was a bond measure that was passed in two thousand and fourteen. And it's a thirty-year bond measure that provides three hundred million dollars for a variety of projects. It was a very significant public outreach project, a vision planning, and that led to the prioritization of twenty-five projects. Some of those projects are the Highway seventeen projects that I talked about and Bear Creek. Those projects are Measure AA projects as well. And then we have future projects like the connection to Soquel and other projects in Sierra Azul, and then, of course, up and down the peninsula. Next slide, please. And some of the things that we've done since two thousand and fourteen, so we've added over eighty-four hundred acres of open space. The biggest part of that was the Cloverdale Ranch acquisition, which was over five thousand acres. That was secured last year. And then we've opened up new areas like the Mount Omenum Summit, the Lower La Honda Creek, Bear Creek, and others. And along with this, we've added over thirty miles of trails. We have, in our current three-year plan, we have about ten more miles of trail to be constructed. And then in our three-year planning window, we're planning another nineteen miles of trails that will probably be constructed in the following, three years after that. And then there's also, you know, access in terms of parking, and major parking lots have been added at Bear Creek, at La Honda Creek, and Mount Omenum as well. Next slide, please. So that's everything I wanted to cover. You can, I'd certainly invite everybody to get out in the open space and experience these spaces. And you can get more information either through our email address, our website, openspace.org, or you can sign up for our newsletter as well at the e-newsletter address there. And then we'll push information about different events and different opportunities, as well as news on our projects. Do you have questions? Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I have a question. I used to teach at the La Honda Correctional Facility for juveniles. And we used to use the trails, some of the trails in La Honda, for fire training. So is that available here as well in this area? In, for example, in Santa Cruz or Los Gatos that we can use for CERT when we need to?
I think we probably have to check in with the staff, but in general, I mean, it is possible to get permits for different types of events. So I'm not certain about specific types of training. But if you wanted, I can certainly help you connect with people who could answer that question.
Okay, thank you so much.
Disappointments. I really appreciate what you guys are doing. I've always felt that the strength of the United States is not in its bombers and airports. It's in the parks that you guys keep and maintaining and that people enjoy. From the Romanget Bridge down to where you guys are, so thank you for doing this. And do you have any idea how many people actually have gone through these parks and enjoyed it? Do you keep track of that?
We do have visitation numbers. And I, I might be wrong with this, but my feeling is that it was on the order of three million visits per year. What I remember is that when we talked about Ranch of San Antonio, which is our most visited preserve, the number was on the order of a million visits per year to Ranch alone, you know, which results in significant parking problems that are, that's another one of the projects that I didn't talk about. But, yeah, I think maybe on the order of three million visits a year. And that's been, it actually went up significantly during COVID. It's come back down from the peak, but it's still, I think, above where it was pre-COVID as well.
Are you familiar with the Cities Association? That's a new GPA that's comprised of all the cities in Santa Clara County. Maybe worth it to make a presentation to that group, so I'll give you the contact on that.
Okay, sure. Yeah, we-
I don't know if you're presenting all the cities in New Jersey or-
So typically, we spread out responsibilities for, you know, for various organizations between the board members. So I would have to find out if there's a board member maybe who's already assigned to that. But, you know, I think MidPen is interested in that type of outreach.
So you have all the cities, you know, that visited at that one place.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
So you mentioned parking, and I've heard that at a number of these locations. Has there been any discussion or is there any plans in place to maybe have some kind of shuttles that can take people to the different open areas? Drop them off in the morning, pick them up in the afternoon?
We do have a couple of discussions. Well, first of all, there's a pretty big discussion about what we call multimodal access, which is basically all different ways of getting people into the preserves, you know, whether that's access via bikes or shuttles or ride hills and, you know, whatever methods might be there to try to avoid, you know, individuals going in cars and needing to increase parking spaces. So we've had a couple of discussions around shuttles, one in particular for Ranch of San Antonio. And then another one that's pretty difficult is Purisma Creek. I'm not sure if people have been there, but on the side of Purisma Creek that's near Half Moon Bay, there's a very small parking lot, but it's an extremely popular place. So we're trying to figure out how to manage traffic and, you know, the desire for people to go into that particular trailhead. I don't think we've had this discussion specifically around the preserves right here. But I think if, you know, one of the issues that comes up with El Surano is it doesn't really have parking, right? Right, for the most part. So one of the ideas here is by providing that other way to get it up into El Surano from the dam area, at least that's an area where there is a little more access to parking. So that's one thing. And then Bear Creek, there's also a plan, because we're going to open up a second phase of the trail system. Hopefully, by the end of this year, there's also a plan to create another parking lot there.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. I'm glad you guys are thinking about it. I hope that becomes a reality.
Shuttles are also a little tricky, because what we've observed and in the discussions we've had around shuttles, they tend to be very successful in places where the parking is very constrained, right? Where, you know, for example, you can, you can control access into a place where you could park, and you can control, maybe avoid street parking and that type of thing. So that ends up being tricky with some of these preserves that have maybe many different entrances and different places where people might be able to park on streets. You need to make a shuttle work. You need to make sure that people aren't just going to, you know, find workarounds to buy parking. Other questions?
Couple of comments. A great presentation, thank you very much. By just going in the order I wrote, managing your volunteer group. You've got two hundred employees and a thousand volunteers. That's impressive. I think that leveraging folks to be docents and that sort of thing is great. I'll follow up with you afterwards, but I'd like to understand a little bit more of that, how you manage your volunteers. El Surano is what Monte Serrano's named after, the peaceful mountain. We like to be peaceful here in Monte Serrano. And I think El Surano is, you know, the jam. I personally ride through there probably fifty times over the past ninety days. That's what my Strava says. And I was, I went through yesterday, or today, through El Surano Open Space and on Sunday. So there's two days right there. And I just think it's wonderful, and I would encourage more people to get out there, because it's just so amazing here. It's so close. Los Gatos has St. Joseph's Hill and Sierra Azul. Sierra Azul's huge, but it's a little more difficult to get to and a little challenging steepness-wise, but there's nothing like going up- But it's, uh, a little more difficult to get to and a little challenging steepness wise, but there's nothing like going up. Into Sierra Azul and going over Elson Brasso down the backside. That's just amazing. Mount Omunum is phenomenal.
So it, it's a great place. It's, it, it's a lot of exertion.
We're, we're so fortunate. Because it's right there in our backyard anyways. I can't say enough good things about Mid Penn.
So, thank you very much.
Great presentation. Uh, I have just one question. Uh, you mentioned future projects. Are there any specific areas that you have your eye on that you? Would like to acquire at some point in the future and raise both sort of completes or, or whole, you know, sort of speed?
Um, I think o- over time it's become more and more difficult because a lot of, a lot of the big. Spaces have, you know, sort of been spoken for. Uh, Cloverdale Ranch was, was an interesting one because it was still a, a really big opportunity. Um, there's, there's even another part of that that I think will expand it to maybe on the order of six thousand or sixty five hundred acres. Yeah, there aren't many places like that. So in a lot of cases, it's been sort of this filling in the patchwork. And for example, on the, on the road from Mount Omunum to Mount Woma Prieta. Which is, you know, sort of the corridor that we want to open up. There are still a few private lots. Out there. So there, there are things like that where Mid Penn is still trying to fill in the patchwork. Um, you know, I think the, um. The idea of finding better connections to towns and cities is always a, a good one. So we can always look for places that are close to town. That, that gets more and more difficult. There, you know, lots of people could have houses on. Uh, because they get very expensive. But, uh, but I think those, those connections, you know. Uh, one of the things that Measure AA said it was going to do was, you know, provide closer to home riding and hiking opportunities. So there's nothing like being able to get directly in there with, you know, less travel on the roads and, and. Uh, not having to park and, and so forth. So I think those opportunities are always interesting, even if they're smaller spaces.
Yeah, I think Measure, uh, Measure AA, making that a thirty year is very smart. So that you don't have to. Yeah, then sort of fear every five years or every ten years that. Organization might be in trouble. So it's, it's another twenty years to go. So that's great. We're planning, planning ahead. Um, I have a question for, uh. A city manager. Do we have a link to the Mid Penn website on our website?
I believe we do, but let me check.
Okay. That would be very useful for some of our residents who don't know about this.
I'll make one other observation and comment. Um. I know that we, the city of Monte Sereno, we've put together, uh. Bicycle and pedestrian master planner. And with, um, the VTA, they have a bicycle plan as well. And you've got destinations and it, it seems like there's always an opportunity. For all these different plans to get together. Because you don't go for a ride through Monte Sereno. You go for a bike ride because you're going to a destination. And it just seems like the left hand sometimes doesn't know what the right hand is doing to connecting all these. And with, with bicycle plans, I think that's critical. And the way, and the beautiful thing is here you can get to Elserino, you can get to Sierra Azul. You know, all Saint Joe's, just same place. Anyways.
Yep. I, I think that's true. We should probably talk about, um, Los Gatos as well because I'm on the, the Parks Commission and. We, we just had a discussion about, uh, trail connectivity. So, uh, maybe we should catch up on that.
Absolutely.
Uh, just one more thing. Uh, we were talking about the Overlook Trail. And I, I talked about the volunteer programs. One of the, the, uh. Sort of advanced part of our, uh, weed management programs is, is called ARMS, Advanced Resource Management Stewards. And these are people who've gone to a number of, of volunteer, uh, restoration programs. And then they, they become basically self-directed. So they adopt a, a particular place. And my understanding is that we had an ARMS for the Overlook Trail. And I think she moved. So we, we may no, no longer have one. So if, if anybody knows somebody who would be interested in that for that particular space. Or, or really any other space, um, we, we would always like that. But, you know, that's particularly relevant to Monte Sereno. So answer your question, Mayor. We have links to all of the trails and maps in Saratoga and Los Gatos. Um, and I'm looking at the Los Gatos one. There is Jones Hill, the Open Space Preserve, but we don't have anything directly into. Mid Peninsula, so we can add that.
I think that would be useful. Thank you.
Right.
Anything else? Unless there's anything else, I want to thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Great organization, great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I'll, I'll see you in the open space.
Moving on to, um. Oral communications. This is for persons wishing to address the council on any matter of city business not listed on the agenda. They may do so at this time. Since there's no one in chambers here, unless if there's anybody online.
Hand raised.
If anybody online who wants to, uh, address a council at this point, please raise your virtual hand. Nobody? In that case, we'll move on to written communications. Did we receive any written communications?
No.
Moving on to the consent calendar. It is recommended that all items listed below are acted on simultaneously. Unless. One of the council members wants to separate. And one or more items out. So anyone who wants to. Do you want to, uh, move anything out of the consent calendar?
I do. I wanna, I wanna, um. Do number five, adoption of city council votes.
Anybody else?
And I would, uh, ask that you take two and, or sorry, three and four together.
Looks like we have three different groups then. Let's, uh. Let's do item number two first. Uh, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting. Uh, is there anybody, if nobody here, is there anybody online who wants to comment on the minutes of the previous meeting?
No hand raised.
Is there a motion to approve number two?
Second.
We have a. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Approved by to nothing. So let's do items number three and four together. Number three is the warrant list. And then four is the treasury report for the period ending January thirty first.
Move to approve.
Uh, let's do public comment first.
Yeah.
Is there anybody online who wants to comment on items number three and or four?
No hand raised.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or is anybody wants to.
I will say.
Four, zero, one. Then item number five. Adoption of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five city council votes. Council member Turner.
Yeah, I, I was looking at the city council goals. At our last meeting, um. The, um, I asked that, um. The goal document where it says, consider an additional NICP for Monte Sereno. Be replaced with something like complete the NICP to be located at City Hall. And that's their different, right? Because if I were a resident saying, consider an NICP for Monte Sereno. Then that's a new NICP that we're considering. I think what we need to say to be clear, to be transparent and to have, to be valid. Is to say, complete the NICP to be located at City Hall. At purpo- and then have sub bullets that says recruit ten more CERT members, which we talked about. And then consider the additional NICP, CERT volunteers are available to staff them. I think that would be, that would be a lot clearer than to say. Consider an additional NICP for Monte Sereno.
I agree with the word consider because we're not considering it anymore. It's being implemented, uh, as we speak.
So I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
E- everyone in favor of clarifying the language?
Yeah.
So the language would, would be to finalize. This NICP located at City Hall.
Yes.
With the sub bullets that you mentioned.
Yes.
All in favor of doing that?
Just to clarify, that was recruit ten more CERT members and the second.
Consider additional NICP, CERT volunteers are available to staff them. I think that's what, um, what we have today. Is we're considering NICPs as we have more CERT. But what we really need to do for our goal the coming year. Is to complete the installation of the shed that's out there.
Yeah. So the language should be changed according to completion of the NICP to a place at City Hall. That we saw bullets as mentioned. Now, but there was a motion to approve that new language?
Yeah, I started with it.
I don't think we.
We need public.
Public comments on this one.
Um, since there's nobody in chambers here, is there anybody online who wishes to comment on? Item number five of the consent calendar?
No hand raised.
No.
I'm sorry. Who made the motion? Vice Mayor or Councilmember Turner?
You made the motion today.
I said, I just want to confirm you made the motion and it was seconded by Vice Mayor.
All in favor, please say aye.
Yeah, aye, aye.
Can, can you read the motion again? I don't disagree with it, but I don't think it's clear.
So there would be a, a modification to the community. Maybe, yeah, for be maintain community safety. Instead of consider an additional NICP for Monte Sereno, it would read finalize the NIC, NICP at City Hall. And then sub bullets would be recruit ten CERT members. And the second bullet would be consider additional NICP if CERT members available to staff.
So you're talking about considering a second NICP?
Yeah, I believe so.
That was the intention. Did you want a second NICP also?
Well, this is the second one.
Yeah, but, but putting that in, then you'd be considering another one.
No, see, see what it says today is consider an additional NICP.
Yes, we don't need to consider it. We already have it.
Yeah.
We just need to start.
No, we don't have one. That is a shed.
No, I know we have a shed, but we need to staff the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Not that we need to get a third one.
No, we don't need to do a third one. You look at this, it says.
No, I said that one.
I think we all.
When you're looking at, when you're looking at this, the motion is on, right? We're gonna do one more after this one.
So.
We're not doing one more. This is it.
So the language says a sub bullet is consider an additional NICP if CERT. Members are available to staff. So that would potentially be a third.
Consider a third one.
If, if, can be that.
If, if, it, it would be applicable if we had the resources, if we had the need, if we had volunteers available. So there would be a lot of conditions, but it would just be something we would have. As a discussion point, should, should the, the resources become available. Okay.
All right. Sounds good. But just for clarification, the one by Dave's school is the first one.
Yeah.
This is the second one.
This is we.
And maybe in the future we will consider a third one if we have the resources to do it and if it's necessary.
Yeah, I, I, we, we're doing goals. So I don't know if you want to make that a goal at this time. And so that's why I was saying, I think also we're trying to make sure this one is fully staffed and resourced rather than have another.
See, uh, uh, last year we were considering a third one, which was gonna be at. It's the name of that place here by Becky and.
Oh, um. I forget now.
But we didn't have enough volunteers in Monte Sereno to do that. So if we get this NICP and we get ten, then we can do a third one.
I think we all agree.
All right, let's move on.
So the vote was?
Yeah, I guess we can take it.
Can we take the vote again? Thank you. So our motion by, um, Councilmember Turner, uh, seconded by Vice Mayor and then the vote in terms of.
If I vote, or if you vote it, if I think, yeah, I would.
Thank you for saying that. And now we move on to items number three and four. No, we did not so very, okay. We're done with the consent calendar. Public hearings. We don't have any public hearings today. Then we move on to unfinished business. Um, item number six on the agenda is consideration of Dave's Avenue S-curve safety measures. Um. For this measure, I, since I live within five hundred feet of the, uh. Item under discussion, I have to recuse myself from this discussion. I will at some point, however, uh, return as a resident and make some public comment. But for now, I'm ending the meeting over to Vice Mayor and I will. Think question and move into the room next door.
Thank you.
Does, does, I just said, but does he need to refuse himself something?
He does.
All right.
Okay, so item number six says consideration of the Dave's Avenue S-curve safety measures. Can you have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and council members. Um, tonight, a little background to get us back up to speed on the Dave's Avenue S-curve project. It originated from multiple safety concerns, which we're all aware of. Several vehicular accidents have occurred from westbound traffic. Entering the bottom of the curbs at high speeds as a result, public mailboxes, pavement and curbs have been damaged. Fortunately, no serious injuries to drivers, pedestrians or cyclists have occurred to date. As a result of the past incidents, additional concerns were discussed regarding traffic calming mechanisms to reduce speeds, protect pedestrians and cycling. Staff contracted with a reputable traffic engineering consultant, Kimberly Horn and Associates, to design and provide. A multitude of options to enhance safety along the corridor. These measures included striping to narrow the width of travel lanes, striped bike lanes, vertical bollards, zebras, which are small bumps. And signage. As reported last December, the design plans were completed and delivered to staff. Staff reports stated public outreach events would be scheduled early and that the results would be reported back to council, which is why we're here tonight. We had two outreach events hosted here at City Hall. The first event took place in early January. And the second meeting was held just recently on March fourth. The first meeting had four participants and we had a great turnout for the second meeting with sixteen local residents, uh, for staff. Uh, including the school principal in attendance. Each element of the safety plan was presented to the attendees. Every attendee contributed to the discussion. And commented on which safety elements they were in favor of. The following polls summarized their feedback. Uh, speed tables were brought up, not speedhouse, but speed tables, which is an approved, um, safety measure. Via the, uh, fire department. They don't like bumps because it, it messes with the chassis on their, on their light trucks, but speed tables. Um, do not cause those problems. Uh, bollards were discussed. Uh, we had a hundred percent opposition for bollards for the local residents. Um, extension of sidewalk is something that they brought up. They'd like to see as far as safety for pedestrians along that. Especially that pitch point where most of the accidents have happened. Uh, flashing speed sign had a hundred percent support. Um, as far as striping, uh, the majority opposed the striping and thought it would not be effective at this time. Additionally, input outside the S-curve scope included interest in adding an additional stop sign at the equestrian way, which would require a warrant study if. Uh, council wanted us to pursue that in the future. Upon analysis, the outreach events were very successful in regards to resident input and preference. Residents clearly support the installation of improvements along the S-curve. If approved by city council, staff can utilize the community input. To move forward on the elements supported, including a portion of the sidewalk. These elements include installation of speed tables located before each curve and at the middle of the corridor. The speed tables will have a direct effect on excessive speeds created in jarring effect within the vehicle prior to entering the curves if they enter at a high speeds. The speed tables are in approved standard by our local fire department. The added sidewalk around the bottom curve will create a barrier at the location of the historic accident zones. The additional curb gutted sidewalk will be targeted for the area at the base of the curves where the mailboxes have been taken out from prior accidents. If budget allows, the sidewalk will follow the curve. If budget allows, the sidewalk will follow the curve and head as far east as the budget will allow. This will create a safer path for pedestrians. Staff will look for future projects to continue the sidewalks along and around the school in the future. If approved by the city council, this project may be added to the annual city pavement project this year to save cost, which we will bid out this summer. And with the cost effectiveness, it should lower the price of what those installations should cost the city. The fiscal impact is we have sixty thousand dollars in our last year's approved budget, which is sufficient to improve what we've discussed here tonight. And we're just not sure how much sidewalk that will actually entail. Uh, but for tonight, for council alternatives that we're bringing before you tonight is that, uh, we're asking you to, number one, accept the input from the local residents and incorporate the improvements into the project, including three speed tables, speed feedback sign, and a portion of sidewalk. These elements would be bid with the annual city pavement project this year. Or number two, choose to fully implement all the speed reduction elements of the existing plan, including bollards with no speed tables. Or number three, choose not to move forward with the safety project at this time and provide other direction. And I'm here with any questions, council member.
Do we have any questions? Yes, let's remember, Megyn, check.
I'm very surprised by this. And the reason why I'm surprised is that I'm on the ad hoc committee, as is, uh, Councilmember Turner. And I have heard nothing about this. I was not invited to any of the meetings. Uh, this is a complete surprise. The other thing is we have a Better Streets Commission. And I don't think they have met since they approved the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And I think that you're really, we, we are really missing out by not involving them. And I think in the, in the community culture of Monteserino, we have to collaborate. We can't have, have surprises. And I really think that there's an opportunity to do more collaboration and to get more input. I think that putting in three speed tables, uh, may be recommended. But I think there's other alternatives. And when I spoke with the representative from Kimley, uh, sorry, I'm. This is questions and I apologize. Did you seek the input of the Better Streets Commission and the Ad Hoc Committee or the S-curve?
Uh, the Better Streets, we did actually, then, Councilman Megyn, check, we checked their record and we did review those plans, but they've wrote it in here. But not the Ad Hoc Committee, you're correct.
What the? Was the Better Streets Commission included in the meetings that were held? I do, I do know as background that it, it was brought up at the Better Streets Commission because I'm also the liaison for the Better Streets Commission and I brought it to them. As part of the Ad Hoc Committee.
I don't believe they were specifically invited to the outreach, the two outreach meetings.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is there a map available or something or background available as to where these things are going to go?
I can pull that up.
Yeah, that, okay. The, the actual speed tables?
Or the road itself, you know, the road itself, the one that we, we're giving, they're going to go, whatever the, on finish our, it's going to look pretty good, right? I just can go with that one.
Right, we presented that to, uh, council before. We reviewed that, um, and, uh, Councilman Megyn, check, there are a lot of elements involved in that plan, multiple different elements that we could implement, so. The locals just, um.
And, and do you have any specific, you can deal with all of this? What, what is the standard?
Well, I think the, the speed tables for reducing speed is what we call an active deterrent, not a passive deterrent in traffic lingo. And that signage and striping suggests to people how you should travel a corridor. Actual speed bumps or police officers with, with, um, speed guns are an active deterrent. Um, you can't get away with, uh, speeding when those elements are around. So what they would prefer is the more active approach with the speedhouse. So if you're approaching at a high speed, which has caused those accidents, you will be very uncomfortable traveling across that speedhouse before you get to the curve.
So I, I had a quick question. Did he actually do a speed study on Dave's Avenue recently?
We've not been a speed study in the terms of a speed analysis and what they're entering and leaving at recently. Um, I believe there were some measurements in the past, maybe before I was here, and maybe one of you have some of that background, but nothing lately as far as having the speed get out there, checking speeds coming out. We do know that the accidents happened at a higher speed than was suggested during the corridor where it lost control.
And, and do we have any, uh, statistics on how many accidents have occurred at that S-curve?
I'm going to defer this, maybe to four or five years. Councilman Megyn, check, we know more about what that number actually is. I, I believe, I know two specifically that I've been told about. There may have been three.
Yeah. Uh, I believe that, uh, Mayor Wolchimer's, um, mailbox has been taken out at least three times. I know of two other collisions that have occurred. I don't call them accidents, they're collisions.
Yeah.
Uh, one was at the bar and at the most westbound end act, action, after you turn right and then you turn left. Uh, and I would suspect that in the past ten years, there's been at least eight.
Okay, well, I can add about four or five more of close calls, not actual accidents. Neighbors that have literally had to jump out of the way of the car, but.
Um, which is, the speed table would be our first element of, uh, speed suppression and that, so. You, you, you hit it, usually hit it fast once and then after that you don't do it again, so.
Yeah.
I've done that myself.
How long would it take if you, if you pick alternative one, how long would that take to fully implement without the sidewalk portion?
Just the speed tables?
I think that's a speed table and the feedback sign.
The speed tables and a speed back sign.
Maybe you have a sign that you're going to hit a speed table which is going down or something.
I would say two to three weeks, we could have that up and running.
And how much did that cost?
We're estimating about twenty-five thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars to do just those versus the sixty that we have. Like you did.
I don't know if I have access to your most updated plan, uh, map, but I think you can at least point out here if you wanted to.
Sure.
Um, here, where, what, you guys are looking to it, so we could have a.
So typically on a speed table, we would calculate what the designated speed is for the area and what the stopping distance would be at a typical speed as you're coming down this lane here, uh, is that, uh, that's westbound here. So a speed table would be somewhere around here. The first one, the second one would be midpoint during the corridor. And the third one would be up here as you're approaching Dave before you hit the curve. Again, we would calculate that on a speed basis to make sure that that speed be safely handled at the speed table on both ends. So it'd be deterred here, deterred here, and deterred a third time in both directions.
What does the speed have to come down to? Targeted fifteen miles an hour or twenty-five miles an hour?
It's, it's going to be targeted probably about fifteen miles an hour, it's twenty-five mile an hour corridor, but you don't want to take that in much fashion than fifteen miles per hour.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead. It's self-regulating because once you do it at a certain speed, you know what speed, you could take your particular car in, so.
You'd have a sign there too, I guess.
Signing as a striping before and after, signing to the striping.
So I like the fact that you had, you know, much input from, from the local residents.
Right.
But can you tell us, especially for both of them here? Um, how many signage you're going to have and, and, you know, the sidewalk, how, how much of of the sidewalk, new sidewalk are we going to have?
Okay, so let's go with signage first. So before each of these two speed tables, there'll be signage, um, approaching each direction. And also here and here for this, for the speed table. And before that, there will be striping before you hit the speed table, some large chevrons that you will see on the pavement at each of those three locations. As far as the speed sign, you can see right here, this was in the original plan set right here. So you'll have a flashing sign of what your speed is if you're, as you're approaching that, um, speed table. If you're going too fast, you get flashed at and you're going to have a very uncomfortable, um, issue there as you pass over the speed table. So signage would be, um, before each of these tables and striping, um, that would follow before and after, as well as the, uh, sign here for this, what we're talking about tonight. Now, what we wouldn't have is you see these little circles here, those are the bollards. Those are the two and a half footballers that we see elsewhere in town. They were vehemently against that. And the reasons were, they didn't want to, like, you see a car parked right here, my first service. They didn't want to restrict parking for some of the residents. They didn't want to restrict parking for any of these services as far as landscaping goes, deliveries and or trash delivery or pickups. They didn't want any of that, so. Um, so we wouldn't, so they, they wouldn't against the bollards. They thought the striping, they weren't, again, from, from their perspective, they didn't think the striping was going to help, but the, but the speed tables were, was what was really going to help with the speed deterrent. That doesn't mean that we can't add striping after we slurry this road in the near future, um, to bring that up to speed as well. But they were definitely against, uh, the, the bollards.
And then we have sidewalks, new sidewalks that you're going to put in?
The sidewalk that they were talking about particularly is this pinch point here where, um, apparently the mailboxes were being taken out down here. We have to put a, a little bit of a retaining wall back here on this, this hill here and try to take, bring this curve around here. It's dirt down here right now. So it's, it's not what we'd like, but it is safe for the kids to walk to school on down through here. But we'd like to bring this, um, sidewalk down as far as we can here and connect with the one that's right down here. Not sure how far we can get with the money that we have, uh, but we could use that as a future project if we can extend that as far as we would like. Now, up here, unfortunately, we didn't grab the sidewalk with this project before I came here. I wish we would have been put that in up here along this, this big project here. So this will have to be a future project. We have the, you see the right of way line here? This is all city property, the sixty feet. This is all ours in here. This is not the residence. So we have the ability to put improvements in here. It's just unfortunately going to cost the city money now instead of the resident having to install those buildings.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I have a couple of more for you. Uh, so you were talking about a, a speed warrant, a flashing speed sign?
Yes.
Was there any thought about a, a flashing S-curve sign to alert people that they're entering an S-curve?
That has not been brought up yet, no.
Okay, just curious. And when you say that you had twenty members of the public, were they? Uh, I, I'll just make the assumption that all of the homes along this route were pretty well represented.
I believe all but one couple was from this area. The other couple was from over here.
Okay, and it was unanimous?
Yes.
Excellent. And what is the basic cost of a hundred feet of sidewalk these days? I don't know what the price is.
With the retaining wall?
With the retaining wall.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna throw, gonna throw out there about a hundred and fifty bucks a linear foot.
Okay.
Minimum. And it goes down in price the more you, right, volume you have, so.
I mean, I, I just remember the section of sidewalk between Poppy and as far down as Dave's Avenue. I think they did that for seven fifty about eight or nine years ago.
Yeah.
And so.
Seven hundred fifty thousand?
Thousand. I'd really like to.
Sidewalks are expensive.
Yeah, I really like to get this corner at least put in place. Then we can attach and go with, with the projects connected. But this, if my kid walking down here or this is where they're out in the street or on the edge here, will these people racing around this corner? Yes, that's, that's scaring me quite a bit.
And I will say, uh, I've had a number of comments that that's the corner that most people have to road dive away from.
Right, exactly. So I'm much going to have them be very uncomfortable getting at high speed here, even if they're, I mean, period or something. There's a shock to the system that you need to put on a brake.
Yeah.
Whether you're paying attention or not, or you're on your phone, which is a lot of the accidents today. If you hit that table on your phone, you're going to realize that, oh, I must slow down whether I see that coming or not, so.
So can I?
Yes.
Yeah, are, are, are you proposing for tonight that you're going to do this up to the extent that your budget permits?
Yes.
So you're not going to go over budget?
Right, I'd like to extend this sidewalk as far as I can and use as much budget as I can till I have to stop.
And that's now sixty thousand for signs, flashing speed signs at the, at, at both entry points, three speed tables, and as much sidewalk as you can lay into that corner.
I actually only have one sign here now, since this is what I was told with high speed zone, that long runway. We can't add a second one up here if you'd like.
Okay, so just this side?
Just the one, yes.
Okay. Okay, one sign, three speed tables, and sidewalk. Okay.
Now, when the street comes up for resurfacing in our, our annual plan, we can still add the striping at that point too, if that's what the council would like to see. Um, I would like to have this at least slurry before we put new striping down. So we don't have a cracked street where we'll put the striping down and we have to come back, break it out, put in a new slurry seal and then go to the top. Or we'd have to add that to the budget if you want to do this, which would be costly.
Should, should we leave the sidewalks alone for now?
We can.
Just, just get the safety stuff done and then come back with the floor or the, the sidewalks in the, right?
That's not true.
The sidewalks are going to be.
That's not true.
Councilmember Megyn, check.
Uh, I think we're moving into comments now and I would like to hear from residents after we finish asking the questions because I've got a ton of comments. Okay.
But I'm, yeah, I could be kind of wrapped up the questions now. Um, so let's take public comment. Any members of the public online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, great. Let me get. Councilmember Wolchimer. Okay, you're up.
President Wolchimer.
Resident Wolchimer.
I get my answer.
Okay. Keep an eye on the timer for this guy. I'm hearing you go low.
Well, good evening, council members, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address you as a resident. Let me be clear about that. I'm, uh, in my role as a resident now. Uh, the S-curve project under discussion has received, um, wide input from many, if not all of the residents who live along that stretch of Dave's Avenue. Um, the attendance was, was great. Uh, most, if not all, uh, people who lived there attended to meeting, two meetings. Uh, I did attend both meetings with my wife. We participated and listened also. And the outcome of the public input was, I think, very, very clear. There were, um, at the end of the meetings, uh, we voted on the four different things that were up for discussion and the voting was unanimous. It was great agreement between all the, all the residents. And I think, uh, Mr. Jordan has probably gone over the results. And, uh, there was one thing that nobody really wanted. That's the ugly bollards. Nobody wants those bollards. Um, they don't serve any purpose in that area. Um, it doesn't protect bicyclists, I think, because the, the curve is too sharp. And the bicyclists that I know will move out of the way there and drive in the middle of the road. I would do that if I was riding a bicycle there. I would not go behind the bollards, in those terms at least, on the straight. On the straight parts of the, of the, uh, of Dave's Avenue, definitely I would be behind the bollards, but there are no bollards planned in that area, so. So as a resident, I am asking the council to please listen to the inputs of, uh, of the residents of Dave's Avenue and accept, uh, alternative number one and implement alternative number one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, were there any members applying that to speak?
No hands are raised.
No hand raised. Okay, so I'm going to bring this back to council and open it up for comments from the council. Councilmember Megyn, check, you indicated you had some comment.
I do. It was good to hear from one of our residents, uh, that's right at ground zero there. Um, I'm, I'm troubled that, uh, that I believe that the communications, and I wish I would have been there, but I cannot believe that they were done that well. I think it, um, in, in terms of the bollards and the striping. What I heard the consultant that I spent several hours with, uh, from Kimmy Horn, she. from Kimberly Horn, she explained that you, there's no single item that you can do. You have to, when you're dealing with traffic calming, you have to use a, a multitude of different techniques and methods so that, and they all work together so that they all are in harmony and they help reduce the speed, there's no single thing. I absolutely abhor speed tables, and the reason why is that if you break the law and you're speeding, that's one thing, but how about the people that aren't breaking the law, that are going the speed limit? You're forcing me to go over a speed bump and all these things, a speed table. I think that, that we're underestimating the noise and, and how it will be, I, anyways, I, in terms of flashing lights, you know, I, 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 that doesn't work for me, but I go through that curb four times a week on my bike. There is no way that I would go in the middle of the lane if I had a bike lane that was protected by ballers. I mean, it's one thing for people to say that and speculate that don't ride a bike, I go through that curb, I'll repeat, four times a week, at least four times, sometimes I've done eleven days in a row, so, and I also know other cyclists that go through there, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed that we've spent a ye, almost a year doing this and we're still not coming up with a comprehensive plan, and I think it's one thing to sketch things in, and we, we don't even have that. I, I'm, I'm very disappointed with the planning, and I know that what we had before from Kimberly Horn was a full set of plans on this, so, but you know what, if, if this is what the unanimous agreement is, then, you know, I'm not in favor of it, but that's what the residents want, then that's fine, but I, I, I still think that what we should do is, before we approve it, we see a plan that's integrated that shows, here's where the sidewalks can be, here's what the striping is, and you know, so, so I, I can't support what's, what's being proposed right now, and especially since the Better Streets hasn't seen a plan, because there is no plan per se, there's some, some words, and the ad hoc committee hasn't seen it, so that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you very much, any other comments? Okay, so my, my comment is along your lines, and, uh, just based on history, residents want speed tables, residents get speed tables, residents want speed tables removed after a couple of years. That just seems to be the way that I see these things happen, and, and like you said, there are people that are going to be driving this at a minimum of ten times a day, I mean, ten times a week. They're going to be the ones that are going to complain a lot of this. Uh, I, I am a little disappointed that more people did not, that we didn't get more input from the public, I mean, Days Avenue, uh, do we have the numbers, uh, I, I know we don't know, um, the speed, but do we have the number of, of cars that travel on Days Avenue every day, I mean, I gotta imagine it's probably a couple thousand a day.
Most likely they don't have that number four, you're probably correct.
Yeah. And, um, it, it just seems like we should have gotten more, more input on this, and I don't know if it, if, if we didn't broadcast it enough or people were just really apathetic to this, to this, um, need that we have in the city to try to make Days Avenue S curve a little bit safer. So, I want to be supportive, especially of the residents who have to live on it and want it, but, um, along the line of what councilmember Mecklenburg was saying, I really would like to see the Better Streets and Road Commission have a full hearing on this and see if we can't get a little bit more involvement, and also to see if we have a little bit more money that we can put into the project, because I, I also agree with councilmember, member Mecklenburg that you need multiple layers, and I don't think a speed table by itself, or even a speed table and a flashing light, of course, I don't even know how much more you can put on it at that point other than putting some kind of guardrails up or something, you know, trying to make the thing into a fortress so that cars are just gonna sit there and it'll be like a bowling alley with the gutter, with the gutter guys pulled up or something like that, but I don't think we want to have that inside of the city, so. So, those are my comments.
It, it, it sounds like more would be done, I guess, as far as taking a look at it. Uh, maybe you need to do a meeting with the ad hoc committee and then with the city commission. But I, but also I think it is in our interest to have that safety, some free safety features there, so we don't spend a year trying to figure out how to do it and invite an accident. Is, is there, what's a manual that can be done, I mean, that, that at least some of us are gonna, all of us can agree on, so if flashing lights are concerned, or some warning signs are concerned, could those be put in as quickly as possible?
I would suggest that the quickest would be a couple of the flashing lights, the feedback signs, and or two or three of the speed tables that like you said, they can be put down, they can be scraped off in two years or in a year, if that's not, if that's not what they want, it's not difficult to take those back out, they pretty much sit on top of the existing pavements, but.
All right, so are these the high-impact plastic or the, the really super-duper plastic ones, or are they actually poured asphalt?
Actual asphalt, actual asphalt on top of existing, so they could be scraped off if they're unwarranted at the same time, but those would be the quickest to answer your question while we look at further implementation of the developments, but.
I, I, again, there's some concern about putting speed tables, so if you forget about steel, just put some flashing lights and some signs up there, would that be a starting point?
We should.
While the rest of it is explored, as to where else should go there?
You bet, and we have a, a Better Streets Commission meeting in a week and a half, and we'll bring this up with the, with the local council.
Okay, councilmember Turner?
Yeah, I, I, I'm a little concerned about the flashing lights, and here's why, I have had some friends with flashing lights, and they go to their bedrooms with those flashing lights, and then they come back and they complain, and they go, I got lights in my bedroom all, all night. So, I don't know what the answer is, so I think what we need to do is we need to go back to square one and make sure that we're not creating unintended consequences for it.
That's a great point, that's exactly why we placed the one down here at the bottom, because it's shielded by a bunch of trees and whatnot, that's the spot that we found that would not shine on anybody's.
So that, that was gonna be another item I brought up, did you talk to the homeowner that would have the flashing light in front of their house?
I believe they.
I believe they were there.
They were there.
So they were a part of it, and they were in favor. Until the, until the. So, um, I also just want to go back to councilmember Mecklenburg's comments about a comprehensive layer, what other, this, this, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the report that, that you were, you're talking about, are, are you familiar with that report?
Which report?
What's the report, you said you talked from the Kimberly Horn?
Oh, sure, yes.
Okay, and what's there?
It was this.
Then basically that's one right there.
That's it.
And were there any other recommendations that they made?
When there's striping, uh, the day, there's ballers that they asked for, and there is some of, of what we call zebras, there's small humps along those to keep people from traversing outside of the travel lanes, bicycle lanes with the striping, um, so basically striping, ballers, and a few more speed humps, and, and the striping has a certain type, it's not just regular striping, it's a striping that has different variation of length during it, so it gives you a visual feedback that you're traveling faster than you really are to try to make you slow down, so there's, it's, it's not just a, a traditional type of striding mechanism, it's actually psychologically trying to slow you down.
And then you said there was another type of, of road artifact, like.
Yeah, we call, we call it zebra, it's a little.
Umbra?
Yeah, it's like, it's like a.
It's a little hump, a little hump.
Yeah, so when you hit that, it, it jars you, if you're, if you're going into the, the bike lane, it will jar you, it's like, stand here.
Okay, but that's, that's not one of the recommendations?
It's not, it's not.
But those are, okay, councilmember?
Yes.
Mecklenburg?
I believe that this came up a year ago, um, it was in the middle of March, that's when, uh, uh, our resident or our mayor, um, and I were out there measuring, two weeks later, that's when the collision occurred, the really ugly collision. Previous to that, in January-ish, that's when the vehicle went through, almost hit the, or hit the curb on the west side, then the east side, and then slammed into another vehicle on, at, going out of the curb. I mean, that was, that was a horrible incident, incident, which is, which is what prompted councilmember Wolfheimer and I to go out and actually measure things and look at them. Um, so, what, where I was going was, I think that this could all happen very quickly if it's focused. You've, we've got the plans that Kimberly Horn put together, taking that and saying, here's phase one, here's phase two, I think that just to put down some striping, it, or to do something is not appropriate unless it's all part of a, of a plan.
But, but you don't think that the flashing sign and the speed tables are enough to get started with?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't think you want to get started with those, I, I.
You think we should get started with what I first?
I, I think that there's other alternatives that, that need to be done, that are lower cost. And, you know, some people say, and, you know, there's no right or wrong, it's, it's what's the opinion, right? Like, I've, I've spoken with police officers that will say, if you have something that is in a jar of the vehicle and someone goes into it too fast, then they're gonna be out of control, now what have you done, you know? And so you, you need to think of all, of all the components and how they work together, and, you know, just, I, I'm sorry, but this is pretty near and dear, because I would feel horrible if someone got hurt there while, you know, un, until the full solution is in place, but when I was in Argentina three weeks ago, it's a country that has public healthcare, so they pay for their own, their own, uh, trauma for everyone, they don't have much money to invest, so what do they do, they put in, in systems, if you will, or, or components that are low-cost and very effective. And I took photos of these things, and actually I showed them to, to Mr. Jordan, saying, here's what they have in downtown Mendoza, these, the zebras, and they're protecting a bike lane, they, they also have the, the lot, the striping that Kimberly Horn recommended, where the, the first line that goes across just the lane that's going towards the S curve, say, it's, it's so, so many inches wide, and it's fifteen feet before you hit the next strike. Then the next strike is twelve feet, then ten feet, then eight feet, so these stripes are there and they get faster and faster if you're going at constant speed, so it forces you to slow down, those are all over, uh, the Mendoza area because they're inexpensive and they're effective, the li, the little, um, zebras, you know, if you don't like them, you don't have to scrape it away, you can, you can just take them away, anyways, my point is not to, not to solve the problem, my point is I think that in a couple of focused weeks, you could come up with a plan that you could bring back to council and say, here's phase one, here's phase two, here's phase three, I don't think it has to be, uh, a six, you know, a two-month project coming up with that, I think it can be done fairly quickly, and then everyone's on the same page, some more input from the, from the Better Streets, and we're all there, that's the way I would recommend, consider.
Okay, can I make one more comment? Yes, um, just more feedback from the local residents, they wanted, I've heard it several times, I'm sure you all have too, they want to make sure they retain that, that, uh, that local rural feel of their street in their neighborhood, they don't want, right, mostly the ballers, I think, would react to that, but they want, they don't want too complicated, they want to stay rural, that was their com, comment for you guys, so just related that to you, so, okay.
How long would it take to, uh, take it to the, first you gotta come up with another, another plan or the same plan? You take it to the ad hoc committee and then you also have a meeting with the Better Streets Commission.
Better Streets is next week, I'll take it next week to the.
You take the Better Streets Commission next week, and then in the meantime, I guess, within this, before next week, also meet with you guys, I guess, ad hoc committee, and then, uh, once you get through that, then you bring it back to the council at the next available, uh, agenda that we can put it on.
Yeah, and we gotta look at, at, like you suggested, one, stage one, two and three, what that will look like through the Better Streets, and then whenever they add a, a meeting, we can add a hop in them together with all those recommendations, you can direct us.
So the first meeting is May, I guess, probably bring it back to the council, most likely. If that works, I guess, I may be able to run.
Okay, well, and I would like to add one more item, and that is, before we put this on, on, I'm sorry, before, when we make this another agenda item, I would like to send out a citywide email blast saying that this will be on the agenda at the next city council meeting, so many times we.
Yep.
Well, I've seen a lot of times when people are like, I didn't know this was going on, I didn't know this was going on, and sometimes it takes three times and the, we'll have a packed chamber, because people actually are, oh, I've, I've got some opinions on Highway Nine, I mean, on, on Days Avenue, or, or, you know, everything inside the monastery, you gotta tell them two or three times before it's things that I think. Especially being around Easter, I don't know, maybe a lot of people weren't opening up their email and reading the agenda, but I don't know, what do you all think about that, uh, the citywide email blast?
All right. Absolutely.
We went door to door last time, we'll do it again.
I don't have to go door to door, I mean, I think, cause I think you, you've already got a core group of people.
We have an outreach for you, who's Sarah, who's not here tonight, she won. Yeah, I did a great job of reaching out for the locals, so we'll bring all those people back, you can hear them on.
You can talk to the Better Streets Commission.
I, I think that that's the purpose of the Better Streets Commission, so that we've got the Better Streets Commission recommending something that comes to council, so we're, we're leveraging all, all of our resources, we're not just sitting here as a city.
Remember, we always want somebody we can push in.
Let, let, let me just send them one more thing, you know, on Allen Dale in, in Saratoga, they have three, um, speed bumps, and the residents wanted it, right, because people were speeding cars, and now they're all complaining because they can hear the engines and, and, and the cars making all that noise and they can't sleep.
Yeah, and somewhere, I can't remember, it was off of, um, Highway Nines, they're.
We, we put a speed bump in and forget the name of the streets, they're like, contesting out here, we can't stand it.
I, I, I don't have one of those speed bumps, I mean, I go down to Eaton, and, uh, where you get some Winchester from, call it, there's a couple of speed bumps, and I know they're there, if I slow down and.
And, but those are kind of in more rural parts of Eaton also, they're, they're, they're near the open, the open space area, there aren't a lot of homes there.
There's also those, uh.
Yeah, there are, but I mean, they're, you know, far off of the street.
Time out there, they're regular, they're regular, so, yeah, but anyway, so they're, the two each is own, the, the, I think, if you figure it out, then let's get it done. My, my concern is let's get it done, before really your bad actually happens.
Do we need a motion to continue this, or do we just start with any action and then continue automatically?
Yeah, I think the feedback is to take it to the Better Streets Commission, work with the subcommittee, and then bring something back to the council to consider and all they are.
Sounds good. All right?
The whole, sorry, so just to clarify, we want to say, um, for a later date, I know you guys also talked about.
Bringing it back.
Bringing it in May.
Preferably bring it back on the May, closer to the, yeah. I can see that here, bring it back, can you do that? Bring it back.
It is the ad hoc meeting.
Group meet. Well, if there's no meeting to do, you're still gonna go forward and say.
I'm just, I guess. What was your question?
How often is the ad hoc committee?
It, it's ad hoc by definition, we, we just call meet as required.
Okay.
And we don't have to meet to, together, we can meet, you know, one-on-one, whatever, it's, but, but I think we're set up a meeting, whatever.
And that's just the two of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm going to invite councilmember Wolfheimer back in.
What happened to mine?
I now turn the meeting back over to Mayor Wolfheimer.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is.
Over new business, consider and accept the city manager's. Under a new business ordinance amended chapter six point ten and title line of the Montesino Municipal Code. To comply with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. And there is a staff report on this item.
That was me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, in September two thousand sixteen, Governor Jerry Brown signed Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three into law. And in twenty twenty, there were regulations adopted to implement that bill. Um, it has been mostly known as the, um, requirement that we have organics recycling, so the composting. But in addition to that, there's also a requirement that, um, sixty-five percent of construction debris. Get diverted from the landfill. So the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority has been working on addressing this issue. And compliance and, uh, came forward in a December twenty twenty-two meeting. Where they directed the, um, staff to come up with a non-exclusive construction and demolition debris program. So that, um, in the past, property owners were required to use the, um, franchise hauler to provide this service. And there were some concerns that there were other companies out there that might, um, have greater diversion rates. Or other benefits that, that residents were interested in using. So, um. The authority presented a recommendation, um, several months ago. And it allowed for competition, improved service in compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three and more accurate reporting. The board accepted that recommendation and was then directed to work with the member agency staff to come up with an ordinance to implement that. So what's before you tonight is that ordinance that creates a non-exclusive process with a collection of construction and demolition debris. And it also, um, includes some additional definitions that are found in SB thirteen eighty-three. That we didn't previously have in our ordinance. Um, there are several terms in there that may not apply to Montesino currently. Um, just based on the type of uses that we have in town. Uh, but it's recommended that we include those in the event we have any of those uses in the future. Or there are any concerns that need to be addressed. So it's intended to comply with the SB thirteen eighty-three definition. And be consistent through all member agencies. So that would be Montesino, Saratoga, Las Gatos and Campbell. So tonight's recommendation is that you introduce the ordinance and leave the reading thereof, and I'm available to answer any question.
Has there been any analysis done on the impact to the, um, person who's. Running the project, to the homeowner who, who pulled the project. They're going to increase their costs, decrease them, or just give them more options? And they're probably paying the same.
I think that it gives them more options. Um, it does give them competition. So the hope is that it would give, there would be some, um, cost savings potentially. Um, but I don't know that we have any data on that.
Okay, is there any impact to the fiscal, is there any fiscal impact to the city?
No, no.
Okay.
I would like to kind of half answer that question as well. Um, in full disclosure, uh, our city attorney is also this, the attorney for the. West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority and I'm the chair of that. And we actually had this discussion in these chambers. Um, and one of the things is that a lot of time, uh, previously. Some residents, including me, I felt that if I didn't have an alternative. And all, all I could use was the recommended hauler that had the franchise, that if there wasn't enough competition. And the, the, the feedback and, and what, what, uh. The management authority wanted to do was actually broaden it so that they could license, basically license these other haulers. And that's when Ms. Powell said, you know, they'll, someone may have a better diversion rate and that sort of thing. It, it is increasing competition, not decreasing competition. And, and for that, I think it'll be more cost effective. Sorry, I, thank you.
And we do, there are currently, I believe, ten. Hall of compet- companies that are contracted with the authority to provide this service. So they did an RFP and made awarded contracts to, I believe, ten.
Councilmember, I agree. So as a member of Montesino, as a homeowner. Am I getting some additional responsibility with this ordinance's point of effect? Am I supposed to do something different? Or is that something that I should know that I require her to do?
It is something that you'll know when you apply and you obtain a building permit. They, um, the applicants are required to submit a waste management plan. And so they will be notified of the obligation to divert six, sixty-five percent away from the landfill. Um. Their contractor should know it, but if they haven't been informed, then our staff, um, will be informing them of that application.
Maybe you should do a blur monitor or something.
We could.
Say, and, uh, it only comes into play when you do some construction or you do some debris away. Doesn't have to do with regular garbage throwing and stuff.
Just construction and demolition.
One last question.
Sure.
How big does the, does the project have to be? Like if you're just. You know, knocking down a pergola or something, you have to make sure sixty-five percent of that goes to recycling? Yeah, crack my toilet up and.
So you, it has to be that you've obtained a permit from the city, a building permit or demolition permit. So those types of things, you wouldn't be required to get a building permit. Um, so it's gonna be a, a larger.
A larger.
Hundred, hundred and twenty square feet, I think, is the, is the trigger for that.
I have a question. Um. What is the effective date and related to that? What about ongoing projects that are sort of in the middle of a project right now?
So it only would apply to, uh, new projects after March first of twenty twenty-four. So, um, our ordinance technically won't be in effect until mid-May. Um, but I believe staff is notifying applicants now and letting them know of this, um, obligation. In hopes that they'll do it. We don't technically have the ability to enforce it until this is effective. Um, but we're hoping we'll get compliance.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? No. In that case, we will open up for public comment. Still nobody in chamber clear. Is there anybody online who wishes to address the council on this topic? Bring anybody to council. Any, any further discussion, questions?
I'll make the motion. Uh, uh, as set forth in the, um. In item seven, uh, for to wait the reading of the ordinance, et cetera.
Yes, it'd be the introduction of ordinance number NS dash two four one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Montesino, amending Montesino Municipal Code Title Six. Chapter six point one zero, solid waste, organic waste and recyclable materials. And Title Nine by adding chapter nine point one zero, construction and demolition debris diversion.
All second.
Yeah, Morgan, a second.
Councilmember Richard. Oh, yes. Um, Councilmember Megachik.
Aye.
Councilmember Locky.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Craig.
Aye.
And Mayor Wolchimer.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion, House five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider and accept the city manager's quarterly report covering dates. January first, twenty twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, which was Sunday.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the quarterly, the latest quarterly report. And we just had gone through strategic goals at our last meeting, so. I don't want, I didn't put a lot of reiteration of what we covered during that, uh, goal setting session. And what we crossed off the list, but, uh, just the general data points, you could see the building activity. Uh, building permits issued, the valuation and the inspections are down a little bit from last year. At the same time, um, when it comes to the housing element update, I hope that all of you read through what is on the list. But we have an update to the update and we, uh, HCD did respond to us. And we have a meeting scheduled finally for Thursday morning at ten AM. So, uh, we have been going back and forth with them for quite a bit, trying to get them to respond. And we finally were able to get that meeting scheduled.
Thursday, April fourth?
Thursday, April fourth, at ten AM.
Wow.
This Thursday. So, uh, since this staff report was posted last week, we've made that accomplishment. So I wanted to update on that. And moving on to the SB nine category of the, uh, report. We, we also have a SB nine lot split, um. That is submitted a development application. It's the first of two SB nine, as it says in the report. Um, uh, splits, but this one actually, they're, they're applying for a building permit. That's on Vineland Avenue and, uh, Robin Ann Way, the big lot sitting there. So those are the two updates regarding the planning, uh, to the report since it was printed. Um, you know, the building permit applications online. I know Councilmember Megachik came in recently. For one of our online building permit applications and, um. As of January first, everything is now online. Uh, state law and our process is working very well, very smooth. Um. So continuing the good efforts in that area, you can apply for a building permit anywhere, anytime, paid electronically. Um, and I hope Councilmember Megachik will share his experience with the group. Um.
You want me to comment right now?
Not yet. We'll get through the report first. Um. You know, I didn't elaborate on this during this, this, the goal setting session, but we did form a neighborhood launch up in the Witty Road neighborhood. During the quarter, we had several neighborhood watch and meetings, community meetings. Um, and of course, one in conjunction with the Las Gatos Montesino Police Department. We posted, uh, neighborhood watch signs in the neighborhood as well as no parking signs and some other signage. S curve, we covered that earlier this evening. We did have two meetings. The second meeting was very well attended. Um, as, as was mentioned, Sarah Chafin, employee, Montesino employee, went door to door. And, um, was able to get that meeting well attended. But as we have discussed earlier this evening, we're moving on in that process. Community center bidding process, um, we have about twenty. Uh, respondents to that. We will be opening the bids on Friday, April fifth. But there was, uh, we had a little open house here last week. It was very well attended by the bidders. Um. That is the latest on that. The peaceful mountain monitor, you probably received that in your mailbox. We also sent out the electronic version today. Uh, we're very proud of this edition. Please read it. Give us your feedback for future additions. What you'd like to see. Customer service data. I had Michelle Quong, uh, provide. Uh, all of the data that was received during the quarter. These are voluntary surveys. Not everybody fills them out, but the ones that were filled out, as usual, we received all very good marks. So I hope you took a look at that. Um, and that's usually the case. We usually don't get any bad marks. So we're proud of our customer service. And our planning and building. Keep our city pretty. Uh, you probably have seen the signs up in the neighborhood. The youth commission will be hosting the event on April twenty-first at two PM. We will be going around and, uh, picking up. Debris in honor of Earth Week, our signature yellow trash bags. And, um, we're getting support from the clean water program on that, as well as a couple of our council members who have volunteered to participate. And we had some residents respond as well that want to participate. Very leading to get inside.
We can sit here.
At City Hall, okay? Two PM, April twenty-first. We will launch from here. And that includes everything that I believe was not covered during our strategic goal session. And I'm open for questions.
Uh, I will make a number of, of comments. First of all, the online permit system. Uh, I was amazed at how easy and fast it was. To put my permit application in and it got approved. And now what I need to do is actually change my HVAC, but, um, and then I'll, I'll report back. On how easy the inspection scheduling is, but I think, I think the city should be very proud of the online permitting system. So that's number one. Uh. Keep our city pretty. Um. I noticed a sign, several signs, uh, in Montesino. Uh, one is on Winchester where the, where there used to be a bus stop. And my family said, hey, did you see the sign? And I'm like, oh, I didn't see it. I went out and took a picture of it. So I compliment, uh, staff on that. And then there's also one on highway nine where the food trucks. The food truck used to be, and that is in a perfect location. I, I really think that was well done. Um, with respect to the S curve, we talked about that. So that's wonderful to see it moving forward. Uh, and then finally, I, I will say that, uh, I will compliment staff and the mayor. Uh, on the peaceful mountain monitor that just came out. It, I got a copy in, in, uh. At the city hall and then I got a copy in the mail and I got the online version. So, well done.
Very clear. Yeah, there's been some discussion about the printed version of that. We should keep going with that though. Uh, considering a lot of people in Montesino are not very well versed with electronics or, and computers. I think it's very important to keep the printed version going.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree with you.
Go ahead. So I, I did read one comment on, we only disagree on our customer satisfaction survey. So we only accept PayPal, huh? For electronic payments?
We actually have PayPal and Square.
Okay.
So we get a lot through Square. That's the majority of what we take in.
Okay.
Electronic payment.
Okay, the, the, the comment made it seem like they, that we only accepted PayPal, but so that's incorrect.
That was not an accurate comment.
I think that's just through our portal, but we're gonna be shifting that. Yeah.
Okay.
To be different, but when they come in here or they call and make a payment, we use Square.
Cool. You, you may want to look.
You already started.
Uh, you may want to consider taking Zelle. There's a lot of people can do that and maybe Venmo. Which you can do from bank out to bank. They'll allow people to do all of those. Uh, good job on, on your letter, on the, uh. Montesino news letter where you're done to the point. I think the information you gave is gonna be very helpful to the residents.
I think it's, it's ninety-nine percent staff and one percent.
You get, you get the credit as a mayor. I think Steve can live with that. Uh, on the building permit, I think it's an excellent way to do it. But for people who know what they're doing, my wife was trying to get a permit and she couldn't do it. So I had her there doing it, which kind of happened. My thought is we have a lot of senior citizens. Maybe you should consider providing your computers. I mean, going on online is, don't, don't get away from that. But people who can't run computers or who are not as proficient, it might be helpful to have a computer in the city all summer. They can come in and say, okay, you gotta go on the computer, you sit down and do it and maybe somebody can help them out for a minute. I think if you consider, uh, that, that availability for people who really don't know how to do it online.
We actually continue to serve, so folks that still come through the front office, we, we don't, you know, turn them over.
I appreciate that.
We continue to do our prop, the.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so you could do that or maybe they can sit down and you can see which one looks better, or faster or easier. That way you can have a computer and they can sit down and do that. I, you guys can figure out which one is better. Um, and I think that those are the only comments I have. And thank you for giving the detailed report on the housing element. That's, uh, one of those nightmare scenarios that don't go away.
I've got a question.
Any other comments?
Yeah. So with this survey that you have, um, did you only have satisfactory and unsatisfactory? Or was it a step level of grading, like a range of one to five?
I think our city clerk may be more familiar with the criteria, but it's the same one that we've had for quite some time.
So I think it's the same one. We used to do just a paper copy and I think that was established. So it's before, yeah, yeah. So they would just kind of want to take the questionnaire of a, a whole experience. You know, so that would be from the beginning to the end with yes, I think, just numbering it off. And then just allowing a section to hear, you know, any comments or feedback on. or feedback on their experience.
They are able to grade below satisfactory, if that was what your question is?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, you know, if, if there was a grading level. One to five, you know, yes satisfactory, but it's a two or satisfactory as a one.
Um, at this point, I don't know if we've changed really anything. I think before with the paper, we weren't getting that many as we are now electronically because it shoots it right to them. Once their project's been final, they should be receiving, um, an email just the way they get their communication when they were either receiving approval or comments on their project. So I, I'm not sure if they have numbering or it was just, you know, satisfied, not satisfied. What a question.
There's no numerical system. It just covers it with words, satisfactory, unsatisfactory, agree, disagree.
So, so like, for example, when they have Charlotte is the best, she's best of what?
People enjoy working with our staff, so they, they, they took the time to.
Specifically, they charred up.
Well, Charlotte was the one who helped that particular customer, I suppose.
Um, I, I think that column says reform. Yes, I don't think that there's any.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any.
There was no scale. Like, that, that is for them.
So, so.
Whatever comment they want.
They didn't give you any comments as to, you know, which is good. I mean, it would help, it would help other staff members.
Well, I, I believe that the presumption is that Charlotte did a good job helping them with their transaction. Uh, it was, they list in the far left column, which city services did you receive? Building permit and a business license in that particular comment. So Charlotte was the best at helping them achieve what they came in to do regarding the building permit and the business license. Uh, in other words, they liked, uh, the response they received from our staff. But to just say the best at what?
Yeah.
That is a broad category, if you want to be analytical in that respect.
Thank you.
I, I, it's a compliment. I, I can see where the council was going. I think it might be helpful to have a scale of one to five or whatever. So you know you're doing a subwork job or exit job or a good job or just a, you know, big satisfactory job. It, it, it might give you better feedback. So you may want to think about it and see if you can improve, especially if you're doing it online. It, it should be pretty easy to put that into play. You can get a better, better, more productive feedback. I think that's a good comment from Councilman.
All right, um, I want to make some comments also. Um, I, uh, I had an emergency, uh, uh, request for tree removal, which was done online also. And it was approved within minutes. That really had an oak tree leaning over my neighbor's driveway. So the permit was requested and the permission was granted within five minutes and tree is gone. And now I need to plant another one somewhere. But that's another great experience. All right. Any further comments, questions?
I have a question. Who, who helped put all this stuff online? The permit promises, is that our consultant or software guy?
So we have a software, uh, person who designed the, um, what we call e-permit system a long time ago for the city of Sunnyvale. And it's a kind of a tried and true system. It's very simple to use. It's tailored specifically towards Montesereno. When I first came on board at Montesereno, um, there was something in the works for a, a, a billion, an online building permitting system that was much more complicated to use because most cities, they have commercial building and all kinds of depth to it. Ours is tailored, uh, more simply towards what we do, which makes it easy to use and reliable and understandable for our residents for what they're trying to do. Um, but to answer your question, we have a, a, a third party software consultant that works through Mr. Fadapour's company. So designing and maintaining the program. Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? In the case, we will move on to committee and commission reports.
May I? Can we open to public comment? And I believe that the recommendation is for the city council to accept. Does the city manager's quarterly report?
Is there a motion?
Oh.
Oh, the comment, yes. Still nowhere in chambers here.
We do have people online, but no hands are raised, no hands are raised for.
It's the government, remember?
In that case, I'll bring it back to council. And is there a motion to?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the city manager's, uh, quarterly report ending March thirty first, twenty twenty four. Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
There is a flag there.
Yep. Committee and commission reports, um, will stick to the order as shown in the agenda. So Vice Mayor Craig. Anything to report?
Just a, a real quick one. I did attend the West Valley Mayor and Managers Meeting, like of our mayor. And we had a very nice discussion about all of the bills. In fact, this little handout here that we got just before was pretty much what we talked about. So they, they kind of went down this whole list and, uh, a lot of interesting, uh, again, most of them are housing bills. But we also did talk a little bit about black cameras. And I just thought if they wouldn't have squashed that conversation, when they did, it probably would have taken up the entire lunch period. But we did get some pretty good feedback on how to better implement black cameras in the inside of the city. So I look forward to that discussion when it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Alani?
And by the way, this did not come from the Mayor and Managers Meeting. I don't know who. Yeah.
Yeah, I will talk about it a little bit.
Yeah.
So this is coming from the city association. Um, city association chair, Tina Valia, uh, Senator, a council member. She's asked us to comment on these, uh, bills to see how the city's association should, whether to support it or oppose it or to whatever. So at this time, I don't think we can formally support or oppose. We probably have to put it on the agenda and then I would request that this be on the agenda for next meeting to see if Montesereno had taken, wants to take a position on these bills or not. Yeah, and if you guys can review it, we can, we can do that. And again, the bills basically you have to do with some, some renewed stuff and other items. And how's the probability act? Uh, and I went over some of it last night. This, this is more of specific bills that the city association is going to be considering in our next meeting, I think, might be next Thursday. So we probably won't have another meeting for that. If you, if you can put in the following agenda to be, uh, it puts sixteenth or whatever that is. At least we can come back and let them know that we're going to be considering it on the sixteenth. Probably if they put it on, on the ward before that time, then I could probably rethink. Uh, or I'll, I'll take a look at it. It's an obvious thing that it's easy to support and do that. But please take a look at it and if you can put it on the agenda for the meeting. Consider which ones you want to support or oppose or abstain. They don't push them on. So I can represent you properly that you.
And I did have one last thing to comment on. Um, I, I, I do read these emails we get from the California City News Update. And I thought it was interesting, the story about how, um, cities are pulling out of the Cal Cities organization. I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, that's the couple of, couple of cities in the, some of the companies have pulled out. Huntington Beach and for some reason, I guess, so.
There were three of them.
Yeah.
Orange County.
Yeah, Orange County, so probably was.
They're, they're not happy with Cal Cities' position on mostly having, having built in the proposition one.
Okay, Councilman Lintner?
Are we doing comments or?
No, we're doing, uh, committee and commission reports.
Oh, I can't, no, I shouldn't report.
Nothing to report?
No.
We'll do, uh, comments, I'm sure it's.
I'll do, yeah, I'll do the comments.
Councilmember McEachran, how would you go next?
Sure. Uh, first of all, uh, the VTA Policy Advisory Committee, I was disappointed. The meeting's canceled coming up. And, uh, Council, or sorry, Vice Mayor Craig reported what happened at the last, uh, pack meeting. West Valley Clean Water Authority, um, there's, that's a quarterly meeting, so I have nothing to report on that. Uh, West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority, um, I'm not sure if people saw the front page of the Merc last Wednesday with the diversion rates, uh, within Santa Clara County. Um, we, uh, West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority, we are going on a tour of a composting and a solid waste and a recycling facility on April the ninth. And, um, I am going to encourage staff to get in front of the controversial part that was in the newspaper as well. Santa Clara County Recycling and, and Waste Reduction Commission, which I'm also on. Um, I've asked Larry Klein, who's chair, to, uh, uh, encourage staff to put that on their agenda. Um, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, uh, we have a board meeting next week. And so I'll report back on that. And Councilmember Craig reported, or sorry, Vice Mayor Craig reported at the last meeting. Uh, I believe that's the sum and summary. Bye.
Okay. I want to thank Vice Mayor Craig for attending the West Valley Mayor's meeting while I was out of town. Uh, Valley Water meets next week, and I will attend that meeting. Silicon Valley Animal Control, I now advise Chair of the Board. And it was reported that, uh, there may be an expansion coming of that organization, uh, which is very interesting. I haven't heard the details yet, but, uh, other cities may be interested in doing any of this organization since it has a very good reputation.
Um, I'd like to make a comment on the Valley Water meeting that you're going to have. Um, I was very surprised, since, since I'm the alternate on that, uh, water, uh, district commission, I was astounded that, um, the work was done on the Sonora Reservoir without the commission knowing. And it's not that we would do anything different. It's just that when residents or constituents ask me, Brian, you're an alternate, what's going on? And I'm like, hmm, I don't know. So I would just ask that you bring that point forward to them in a positive way because, you know, it creates a lot of, a lot of mind share, a lot of questions. And it's, it's really good if we can answer them.
I think this is, uh, this doesn't happen before. These kind of things. Um, the communication between the board and the commi, the commission is not, not very effective. I won't go into further details on this, but there's a lot going on in that organization. As you probably know, I've read it in newspapers. And I'll leave it at that. Um, Councilmember comments? Councilmember Craig, Vice Mayor Craig.
So we had a A D U installed on our street this week, and they had to close the entire street so that they could lift it over the house and put it down. Well, people were asking me what was going on, and I didn't have any idea what was going on. So I thought it would be nice if somewhere we had the, a place on our website or if a heads up was given to the council whenever a project like that was going on, where if we're questioned, we would be able to say, oh, yeah, that street's closed due to an A D U project. And then kind of similar to that, I noticed when I looked at Google Maps, it did not indicate that the street was closed off. And I don't know, do we know how to do that? Or do we have the ability to do that? Does, does it think maybe one of our streets is going to be closed? But Vineland in particular, you know, that's a, a big thoroughfare, especially two, um, in the mornings and afternoons, day to night, when it becomes kind of the, kind of the overflow route.
Good question, Vice Mayor. I believe the way the Google map works is that it is reported by drivers and then they send the, the feedback or something like that.
I thought cities, though, could report if they're closing the street.
I could find out. It would be a first for us here. I don't know. I know in Los Gatos, they have a lot of issues when I was part of that board there, um, with, working with the Google Maps and the, the Apple Maps, uh, trying to get things, you know, notifications out. They would like to close things or please don't send traffic down these routes and things. And I remember the answer we, we've received constantly was, well, you know, it's reported by people who are using the app or, or whatever, their driving habits, but we will check. And when it comes to, uh, the A D U being picked up with a crane and put over, this is the second one we've had in about a year's time. We'll probably see more of these. So I will ask, uh, our building department how they intend to notify the public. I know that they do try to do it over a weekend, so both of them might think we're done on weekends.
No, no, this was done on a Sunday. No, Monday or Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday. I will find out what we can do to better notify the public, uh, ahead of time, either by.
I'm sorry, it was on a Thursday.
Okay.
Is it, is it only for one day?
Yeah, it was just for like, I think from nine till it was done by the time I came home.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's typically not an all day event. So, but we can see if they can put signs out noticing road closures.
Actually, you're right. It was on the weekend, it was Saturday.
And that's what my.
I had to go somewhere on Saturday.
Yeah.
I was up so early too.
I actually saw it happen. Something flying over the houses. Question, do, do they get permission from the city to block the road or they just contact us directly?
It's part of the traffic mitigation plan that they receive as part of the permitting process. So we're aware of the way they will be installing it. And how it will be.
The contractor just came and threw some red codes and that was that. Seems like it.
But everything else is mysterious, isn't it? Or A D U's?
That could be part of it.
No, I was just, I was just wondering if there's a way we could be notified whenever there's some project that's going to cause a street closing, P G and E or road work or something like that, just so we can answer questions from our neighbors so we look like we're doing our job and know what's going on in the city.
Yes, we will work on that in the future, especially with the A D U's being craned in. Because sometimes you'll have emergencies, P G and E, tree fall and things like that where we don't, where we have much notice. But this is the case where we would have noticed.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Please.
Um, I, I've got to say this, I guess I am remiss in reporting stuff and comment period. In the last two months, I've had three residents call me up and have given me a lot of good feedback on our city clerk, Loyce. And I, I never brought it up. I just would come up to her and say, hey, so and so said this about you. And so I think we, we got to have a better way of doing that. I mean, I got, I got good feedback from somebody on Twin Creeks, somebody on Poppy Lane, and then somebody on, I think it was Landrick, no, Becky Lane. And so, you know, and, and it skips my mind. And I was wondering if there's any way in which we could do that so it's automated. And so I don't say, oh, what did, what did, what's the best about Charlotte? Right? Or, and, but with, with, um, with Loyce, it's, it's very detailed. And I, I wish I, I documented it. So I wanted this opportunity to say, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Thank you for, uh, reporting that. Great talking. Any other comments? No. City managers report. I have the feeling we just did that, but I was a different report.
About the only thing to add would be our city picnic. We're trying to schedule it for August eighteenth this year, and we've reserved the spot. We have turned in the paperwork. We need to get them an insurance certificate this year. They had asked for that. And, um, that's about the only thing to add. Is we're, we're working on that August eighteenth. It's about a week earlier than normal. On your calendars, it's still Sunday.
Yeah, the last day was already taken.
Somebody got to go for us.
Let's hope it's not a hundred and five degrees outside. So far, we've been looking.
And I might not be here when I did, so. Instead of ghost, I guess.
That was the city managers' report. Future agenda items. Is there anybody who wants to suggest any? You have one already?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure the city association J P, if you ever put it on the agenda.
It's going to be on next time.
Okay, so I just want to put that on there.
The violence.
Yeah, the violence, right. And, uh, the legislation, city position, I already talked about pretty good on there. On all the bills that are being considered by the city association. On all the bills that are being considered by the city association to support or not, Monte Serena is the most taken position on the city. If we can have that on the next agenda. And I'm trying to figure out, we're doing all this stuff with the N C T and all that, where they should get the the city, whoever is running the search program for the Monte Serena. Whoever come in and just give a presentation as to what the bills and what needs to be done. Because I may as well remember, I haven't been contacted. I don't feel I've been contacted. But formally, I'd like to have them come in and recognize that this is what the needs are and the city needs to do without. Maybe you can coordinate it with, is it Jackie Rose?
Yes.
Yeah, coordinate with Jackie and I work on that. And that is now what they need and.
We can reach out to her if any people will play.
Jason, any other suggestions?
So I know we're going to have a discussion on block cameras fairly soon. If you could just give me a heads up when that will be. Because I've been in contact with the representative from block. He keeps asking me when we're going to discuss this, and I like to at least make an invitation to him to give a a small presentation on the block camera system.
There is somebody, oh, sorry.
I don't think it's on the agenda yet.
So I believe I I don't know if this is correct, right, but we have our police chief coming next week to presentation. And I believe there is going to be some information regarding block cameras incorporated to the presentation, if I'm not mistaken. But I can confirm that I will be in touch with her assistant, and I can confirm the material that's going to be in there. And if it is, then you know, that's the.
But are we actually going to be voting on implementing or?
No, no, that's kind of gathering. That'll be more information for you guys here.
Okay, yeah. So when we actually get down to the presentation, I mean, to the agenda item, wherever we want to make the decision on it. Just just so I can invite a block representative to be available for that meeting.
And I I agree with you, and I think that should be on the agenda sooner rather than later.
Maybe to comment on the block camera. When we installed the block cameras here at Twin Creeks, the police department, right, suggested block cameras in certain parts. The reality is they don't really know until you install the block cameras what what else they're missing. And so usually, it's it's the resident that will say, hey, you, I can't see this on the block camera. And so the only solution, because Monte Serena has those sidewalks, is to put it in the yard. And so we got to have a a a way, and and Jackie Rose is the one that that stands all of this, to to get the residents to sign papers, because they have to maintain the data on the flag cameras. Because it's in the yard.
Okay, I think it should be part of the discussion, planning. That's a good point. Thank you. Any other future agenda items? That is, I will during the meeting, okay, well, it's very much City Council, April second at nine twelve P M.